The official agenda, I might add, there has been an additional agenda to the minutes, and I think that is out of the street department.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a floor?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a couple amendments to the agenda as far as you're saying.
Okay.
We approve it under the mayor's office as a request for authorization to set a date for a recess meeting to discuss reappointment of department heads.
Yes.
I offer that we amend that by discussing the reappointment of department heads tonight. And secondly, that we discuss reorganization in the public service department. And I move that the agenda be adopted together with those amendments of being the one you just referenced about the source, Senator.
Okay, I believe that is Public Works, is that correct?
Public Service.
Public Service, okay. And we'll put that in Department Heads after Community Development.
And we can put the reorganization in the public services after discussion of reappointment of department heads.
The reorganization after discussion of department heads on the mayor's vision, okay.
Yes.
Also the consent agenda, there are two items I'd like to put on the regular agenda, please.
Yes.
Under Community Development, number six, and then also under Electric Department, number three. And add them in at the appropriate places on the regular agenda. Would you repeat those some, please? Under Community Development, on the consent, number six, item number six, and then under the Electric Department, item number three, offer the consent onto the regular agenda at the appropriate location.
Any others on the consent agenda that anyone would like to say bring out of the consent to the regular?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, there are a number of items on the consent agenda which I don't necessarily advocate moving to the regular meeting, provided I would be given the opportunity to ask a question or two about those items as we go forward.
That should be no problem, and we can review those just really quickly when we get down to the community development. Do I hear a motion that we recess the regular -- wait, wait, we've got to vote on this thing. All right, we've made these changes.
I'll stick to Alderman Perkins.
Okay. Would that also include Public Works being added and bringing these other items?
Yes, sir.
So what's your second? Okay. Do I hear all those in favor of these?
That was your point of order, there should be some discussion on that. We have added an item on the agenda tonight to discuss two issues that we've not provided any public notice, and in fact, we advise the public of something completely opposite to that. We said that we would set a date for this discussion. I've had members of the community, both in my board and across the city, ask for the opportunity to comment on this process, and for us to sneak this through and put this on the agenda tonight, I think would be inappropriate.
Why are we sneaking through tonight?
Well, if I understand correctly, that we're adding some items to the agenda about reorganizations of staff as well as appointing department heads, that in the newspaper as well as in the official agenda states that we will discuss reappointment at another meeting in July. And as I repeat, members of the community asked to speak to this issue, I've let them know based on the official agenda that has been published that this would be discussed at a later meeting, and they would have the opportunity to comment at that time.
Mr. Mayor, just in all due respect to my outstanding colleague from Ward Five, certainly nothing improper or illegal or unlawful about these two matters being discussed. The board can amend this agenda at any time, and the agenda is so duly amended upon the adoption of it by at least four more votes. That's always been the practice of this board, so there's no violation of any statute by our amendment agenda. So I would urge our colleagues, let's go ahead and adopt the agenda as amended, and let's proceed with the discussion, and let's discuss in both these issues up and down as we get to them. And so we can conduct the course of business as we get to each of these issues. So I would urge colleagues on the board, let's go ahead and adopt this agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I would further add, I agree with Mr. Cox on one of his items, but disagree somewhat on the other item. My colleagues, I'm sure, will remember the last board meeting where the decision was made not to discuss reappointment of department heads, but to move it to the recess meeting. And that was where we left the matter at the end of the board meeting. And so then all of a sudden, the agenda's different, what's published in the newspaper's different, so forth. So we have a number of issues here that need to be resolved, but I certainly think that discussion of department heads should occur tonight, since that's what was decided in the meeting. We decided that it would be otherwise after the regular board meeting placed on the agenda in a different format, I'm unable to tell, as far as discussion of reorganization of certain department was not discussed at the last department, at the last regular board meeting, other than to say it might be best to look at reorganization as a whole unit. So we have some issues here.
Obviously, we have some discrepancies.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing, there is, it's not unusual for any alderman to place any amendment on the agenda. My colleague, distinguished colleague from Ward Three understands and knows that the agenda can be amended at any time by any amendment offered by any alderman, and if majority of the board agrees with that amendment, then the amendment is adopted and considered. And that's been the routine practice since I've been on this board since 1983, that's been a routine practice since I've been on the board during this last term. So there's nothing out of order. Obviously, my distinguished colleagues just disagree with amendments, and I respect that. I mean, that makes good government, but I respect that. So they just disagree with that, but that does not preclude this mayor board from taking these matters up. So I would urge, let's go ahead and get a vote on this, because we have a lot of important city businesses, we got a lot of interviews, we got to conduct and conclude, we got to make some decisions on these interviews, and we have a lengthy agenda ahead of us. So, Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion on it, go ahead and have a vote on the motion on the floor that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Any other scrap, any other discussions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my colleague from Ward Six certainly has predicted the agenda can be amended at any time. I would also like to remind the board that regardless of items on the agenda, state law is well positioned to indicate that any alderman can make a motion on anything at any time, whether or not the subject of the motion be on the agenda.
We have a motion. Did you have a question?
I object.
What's here?
I highly object to the preparation of amendments due to the fact that we've been here for two days, we've been here all day today, and none of this has been discussed or mixed with anything, and it's a total surprise. And I think this is what Alderman Cox is -- and I think we're, and I want the people in this audience to know, and I've ran on this, and we're going to let the people know what we're doing, and they have nothing more than sneaking something through. And I just want that to be on record. I've got no further comments.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor that we moved tonight, the request for authorization to appoint department heads and reorganize several areas of department heads. We have a motion on the floor, we have that second. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. That motion passes. All those opposed, raise your hand. Did you get the people who are opposed to Cox? Okay. Let me read the corrections on the agenda. We had pulled from the consent agenda night, item number six, which was added on to the community development presentation. We added an item, which from Public Works.
Electric Department.
Right, I ain't finished yet, I just put the Electric Department at the tail end of the thing. Electric Department, item number three, which was taken from the consent agenda. Are there any further corrections that anyone would like to make at this particular point? Then do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda with its corrections?
Mr. Mayor, one other thing that I would add, remember, we are recessing the four block meeting.
Should we go ahead and recess now?
We really should do that before we approve the thing.
All right. Do I hear a motion that we will recess to continue our interviews?
Someone.
We have a motion with a second, all those in favor, please say yes. Okay, we've done.
Black.
We're going to say.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktobahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Dr. Saff, and someone else, and we'll start with you, Mr. Lawrence.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Rule, you have an interesting career, different things throughout your life to this point, an interesting academic background, bachelor's degree in Mississippi State, master's degree in public policy, Walden Free admitted to practice of law in Mississippi, stellar career with the Armed Services, airline pilot, the list just goes on and on. You, ex-mayor, ex-city council member, so on.
I'm tired of this, my life.
I understand. After all of that, why would you want to be chief administrative officer of the city in Starkville?
Well, I've given that a lot of thought, actually. I have an abiding interest in government, and that stems from my time as an elected official. And I have great appreciation for it from both sides, for it from both sides, the elected official side and the appointed or labor side, shall we say. One of my favorite people in the whole world was my city manager when I was mayor. And when it's done right, I think it's a wonderful thing. I think government can be an extraordinary experience for those of you who are elected and those who choose to work in it. And I think it's a thing that makes people's lives better when it works right. And I really appreciated the elected official side when I was doing it, and making a difference in people's lives on a daily basis, because I think local government does that anyway that the state government and national government is not. And I like to participate in that. And Starkville's my hometown, and I'm back here to stay. I retired from Belton, I moved back here as soon as my last day in Belton was there. And I am going to be here for the duration, so Starkville's home, and I'd like to participate in a positive way on the government level, if that's possible. If not, I'll do it from the side that I'm doing, I've been in it for years, which is owning property and managing apartments and half subdivision, so a lot of interest in Starkville, but would you want to?
Oh, thank you, I did not mention the D-word, the developer word, or that you just alluded to.
Well, I don't think that's a bad position.
I didn't say it was bad. Given your background in development, property management, so forth, how would you think you would balance these two indices in terms of doing those things that would have to be done by the city and those things you would like to do personally?
Is that a conflict of interest question caps that way, or is that a time management question? Or both?
Or both, probably both.
Okay. Time management is easy, I have a staff who operated very nicely without me when I was flying to Belton. I was gone three or four days a week, and that was not an issue. You know, I could do things on the weekends, although I do deem a chief administrative officer slash city manager position pretty much a 24/7 kind of job in the sense that you are, if something happens, you want to be available to respond, no matter what it is, you want to know what's going on. But my folks who work in my office are very competent, and I would check in with them just like I would in my lunch hour, whatever available time maybe there. Conflict of interest question? I have properties pretty much all over the town, so there's no one part of town that I would deem to be less important than another. And the basic concept is if the town is doing well as a whole, then anything that I own or have or have an interest in will be doing well also.
Okay. Ms. Rule, let me just say, I want to echo the comments that Alderman McLauren made about your credentials, they are certainly impeccable, it's quite impressive. I remember when you applied for a position on the airport board, and you came in, you did a very impressive job. I was greatly impressed, I didn't know anything about you, so I remember all the motion to put you on commission. But I do want to ask you one question, and I want to ask this to all the applicants. Public policy administrations in ever-changing environment in the field, I'd just like to just briefly answer this question, what have you done to keep yourself abreast in the environment of public policy?
Well, public policy is, to me, current events is almost a primer on public policy. So, you know, if you watch CNN, you're sort of, you're keeping up with things a bit. But more specifically, I have CLE courses that I take every year, obviously to keep my law practice, not law practice, because I don't have one, but my license current, so that would be a part of it. I stay in regular and frequent contact with the city manager with whom I worked when I was mayor, and he is an extraordinary individual, and I would find him to be a resource on a regular basis. He's just very involved, and used to be president ICMA at one point in time. There are a number of things that you do, I think, just in reading Mr. McLauren's or Alderman McLauren's book that he put out, I went through, and I'm looking forward to the new version coming out shortly. So those kinds of things I do, not anything specifically targeted, it's more general.
Thank you. Ms. Rule, I know that with your background and just how your personality, you thought long and hard about this job, and you thought long and hard about the city and where it is, and you probably have an agenda administratively of what you would like to see done, put into place, or changed, or kept. Could you just very briefly, because we all have precious time, go through, I know that list is probably long, but just the highlights of that?
There are things, well, I thought things associated with an elected official side, and that's until this position came available or began to be talked about, I was thinking about it from an elected official side. So from an administrative side, I am less set in what I would be doing. What I want to do is look at where we are, and I have not gotten into the depths of the administrative element of it, because to me, the role is almost a liaison between staff and the elected officials. And so I need to see where it is before I would do that. There are certain things, the employee handbook, for example, is something that I would want to look at closely, because there's some things that I think maybe should be addressed a little more in detail with that. There's some structure that I think maybe can be manipulated a little bit, or just adjusted a little bit. But I'm really not going into it with some specific ideas at this point in time, because I'd be much more flexible than that.
That's fine.
All the ladies, self. Do you have questions?
The only question I had, I guess, tied in with what some are asked, and I was, what would have been one of your first priorities as hired for this position?
And that would be would be employee handbook.
Ms. Rule, will you talk a little bit about her approach to performance management? Perhaps you have any experience if you discuss that?
It is, she is a teamwork approach performance manager. I don't, you know, the structure and what is in place now, I think, this is a new position. At one point in time, one of the first things I wanted to, I wanted to talk to Alderman McLauren about how it was at the time that he was in that position, and how many years ago that was, I'm sure there's still a lot of insight there. He's now, obviously, on the elected official side, but I think from a resource standpoint, it would be, in fact, the lunch is what would be. But performance management, to me, it's a teamwork approach, and that's what you're going to do, is foster that. More carrots than sticks. From a technical standpoint, I don't have, what I, and I don't, that's where I have a drawback. I mean, I have not, when I was a pilot, I did not deal with large numbers of people. I hadn't been in the back of my airplane, and I was carrying them where they wanted to go, but I was not managing people. And the people that you manage, you don't see them the next time you fly. So that would be where, if I have a weakness, that's where it would be, but I also have a lot of resources, and I understand that, and I have a big lot, and I know some of their theories, and that there are ways to do that without having actually had a book in existence. This isn't one that officials don't have, but, you know, we stay out of that, we are policymakers as opposed to paid administrators.
Any other questions? Thank you so kindly.
Thank you.
Mr. Yarney, if you could get the other candidate.
Fine, you, sir.
I'm doing fine. These are Alderman, Perkins, Cox, McLauren, Mills, Corey, attorney, what's that attorney's name? All the ladies, self, and Davis. And we'll start the questions from this side.
James, good to see you again. I haven't seen you in quite a while, other than up and down the streets, as you exercise and walk and do all those things.
I've had a lot of.
Tell us why you're interested in the chief administrative officer spot here in Starkville?
Well, I have an interest because I think I could bring more administrative experience in that I can fly reporting that would facilitate the mayor as to the progress of this department within city. And that I could also participate in providing the appropriate graphic chart for whatever is necessary to reflect the progress and difficulties of the department or under it.
Have you had any direct municipal experience in any form or shape or fashion?
Yes. I served as a, 1986, 87, New York City Urban Fellow. Urban Fellow's program is considered the building that's been on behalf of the city, the state, and the federal government. And it gives a great deal of exposure to the workings of government. I've had, I've attended personnel workshop at the City of New York. I've visited research political figures, Charles Sillings, who is now the senior senator of the State of New York, visited his office. He gave complete thorough presentation in regards to what his efforts were in regard to New York. And I visit other political figures throughout the course of program. In fact, it's a very, very powerful program, and, but you learn a lot. And I think that the exposure, and which I have had, will be appropriate in providing the CO position with constructive analysis of each department within city, Southview.
Thank you.
Mr. Forside, can you talk about your approach to performance management, and discuss any experience that you might have had in managing the department?
Well, actually, as an urban fellow, I was given an assignment by the City of New York, against the mayor's office. And that assignment was to create bias unit within the Commission on Human Rights. It was my responsibility to identify categorically eight different victims of bias incidents, and put them on a chart statistically and graphically, and to present this to the New York City Council. And of course, I did it, I had nine months to do it, and I did it in five months. And the New York City Council appropriated $200,000 for that effort in the March of 1987. And it gave me another project, and that was, you check out, born, the lending of opportunities for minorities within the State of New York. And of course, I had to check with, I had a form that was designed by Grant Mayors. And the form was set as appropriate enough to indicate that there was no discredibility action within the city. So when you talk about the form, I consider that to be very, very simple.
Mr. Forside, public policy and public administration is an ever-changing environment in the field. A specific question to you is, is what have you done to keep yourself abreast in the environment of public policy?
Well, basically, what I've done is stayed on the website. I did a whole lot of reading. I understand that changes happen, maybe. And I believe with my experience, I'm at the forefront of this change, that I could be. And I believe with my experience, I'm at the forefront of it, that I could be a contributor and assistant to lagging administrative areas that are within the government.
Mr. Forside, do you have any specific, say, administrative goals or agenda or policies that you'd like to see put in place if you were hired as a CAO that you'd like to bring to the City of Starkville?
Well, actually, what I'd like to do is to provide the city first man with a constructive and written progress report regarding departments within City of Starkville. And reflected by charts, graph, and statistical data.
All the ladies, Self, do you have questions?
So, would that be one of your first priorities?
It would be one. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Weathersby, I presume? Uh, this is Alderman Perkins, Cox, McLaurin, Mills, Corey, attorney, Self, and Davis. And we'll start the questions with Mr. McLaurin.
Mr. Weathersby, I note that you have a good variety of occupational and educational experiences in your career so far. Why do you have an interest in being chief administrative officer in the City of Starkville? More specifically, after, why do you have an interest? What skills and experiences do you bring to that position?
I've become involved in various aspects of government in the fire service and through the water associations, and just found that this is something that really interested me, something that I seem to have some ability to do. Very interested in working to help build the community and improve it.
Okay. Are there any specific examples of experiences that you've had that you think would lead in Self toward this particular position?
Oh, there's a number of things outside of the, I work with the 911 Center. It is emergency management, was doing a large part in my initiative, infrastructure improvements that I've been working on, helping to build and find and pound this respective water association. I work with large landscaping firms that have done considerable, large scale property, you know, just by their own business. Makes it do so well.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weathersby, if you could comment a little on your approach to performance management and also discussing the experience that you might have in managing John F. Farnes.
I don't have enormous experience, but I have managed employees in business for a couple of years. I've been managing, potentially, involved in that, so, other larger work, but as far as new performance review and evaluation, set up your criteria and standard.
Mr. Weathersby, public policy and public administration is an ever-changing environment field. My question to you is, is what have you done to keep yourself abreast in the environment of public policy?
Other than just through the work involved, I read the statutes quite often, unfortunately, I think it's unnecessary to have forty-five copy of the statutes. Say, if all reference to that mayor, I suppose.
Thank you. Yes, if you were to be hired in this position, do you have anything specific that you would like to see implemented from an administrative nature or administrative structure within the city?
Well, I think that the position of administrator is necessary to relieve a lot of the day-to-day duties, mayor, I mean. But also relieve towards some of the actions that they have to give the high end. I believe that it's a policy-taking position and such, that would be important for the mayor and the board, so necessarily have specific changes in that respect.
All the ladies, Self, do you have any questions?
I have one. Mr. Weathersby, I noticed in your accomplishments, you said that you secured several federal grants.
Yes, ma'am.
Told in almost one hundred thousand dollars. You, do you have grant writing skills?
It works sometimes. Those were two FEMA grants, actually now Homeland Security, and two state Florida Street grants, which, I don't know, it's not a good thing. But, yes, I believe I can read the nature of the grant and question, I can put together a package or seek the assistance of people who can handle it at any time, but I do those pretty much on my own.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Got one more. If the citizens will indulge us, please, we've been interviewing since two o'clock this afternoon, so some officers kind of tired of interviewing. We have one other person to interview for this CAO job, and we'll get back to the agenda. Ms. Fries, how are you this evening?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
I'm doing very well. This is Alderman Perkins, Cox, McLaurin, Mills, Alderman Corey, our attorney, all the lady, Self, and Alderman Davis. We'll start our questionings on this side, and we kind of rotate around the board.
Oh, Ms. Fries, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you too.
Once I saw the application, I said, goodness, for my colleagues, Andrea Fries is a current participant in the certification program for municipal clerks, though she is not a municipal clerk, she is the city accountant in South Haven and participates in that program. It's been my pleasure to get to know her, though I was not aware that you were going to file for this particular position, an application for this position. Tell us, if you will, why you would be interested in being chief administrative officer and what skills, experiences, knowledge bases you would bring to such a position.
Wow. My husband has been relocated in this state, so that's why I'm interested in applying. Also, I was excited that y'all had this opening because, you know, I wasn't aware that Starkville had a chief administrative position. I feel like with my background and working for South Haven, which is fastest-growing city in the state right now, I've worked very closely with our chief administrative officer concerning personnel issues. Of course, in my position, I've been in charge of budgeting and financing and finding avenues of financing sources to build projects, and I'm very familiar with the state programs. And I just feel like with my background and my training and being able to work one-on-one with our mayor that we have, who's very progressive, that it would be, I guess, an asset for Starkville because Starkville is growing. And it's just, I went to school here, was here for five years, and it's just amazing since I've been gone now. Now, my husband's back, and I've been coming back to graduate school here. It's just amazing, the growth that has taken over in just five years. I feel like that with my background from South Haven, I would be able to bring a lot to the table.
Thank you. Ms. Fries, if you could talk a little bit about your approach to performance management and also discuss any specifics that you have around experience in managing performance.
Performance-based management, we have that, you know, where I am right now, and it's...
Don't be too nervous.
I am, this is the world I'm in.
And all these people.
Yeah, I know. Because I didn't realize that it was going to be like this.
Just like The Apprentice, we even have...
It kind of is.
And I'm thinking, of course, with personnel and...
And rewarding employees, that, and...
That's right. And managing...
And motivation.
That's right.
Right. I'm actually in the master program at this state. This most recent class is organizational behavior that I just want to, and it was great. Talked about motivation and organizational culture and standing behind your employees as a motivating factor and making them feel like they are involved and that it's, you know, it's their organization and they're the reason that we are succeeding and that we are moving together as a team. And that's very important, to have your employees motivated and to make them feel important. And then also, I believe in rewarding your employees. We have a, you know, this assistant program at the City of South Haven that helps send employees back to school if they would like to take that opportunity to better themselves in a position that they're in. And, you know, that's just kind of a... And, you know, that's just kind of a...
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Oh, good. Do we have an approval of a consent agenda? I'm going to read these items quickly if the audience would enjoy them. On the community development that has to do with a signed bearing request by Octavahaw County Hospital located at Born and Hospital Road. It has recommended, these are approvals that have been made by the Plan of Zona Commission, approval or request for placed properties for special use exceptions, construction residents in a C2 zone located on Colonel Muldro Avenue, Muldro Drive at the Old Creamery property. Recommend approval, a request for Clayton Richardson for a site plan review located at 1085 Stark Road. A recommend approval of a request by Ken Nixon and Johnny Moore for preliminary plat approval for Highway 25 Business Park Phase One located in the northeast portroom of Highway 25 bypass and Reed Road. Recommend approval of a request by Ergon Properties for a site plan review at 700 Russell Street. Item six has been moved to the regular agenda. Item seven is a request authorization committee development director Bill Webb to attend a meeting for the Public Works Congress in Minnesota September 10th through the 14th. A request for approval for me to be the Dan Camp, Robert D. Camp, as the city's authorized official representative for ongoing state revolving loan projects. Police department request for our chief, David Lindley, to attend the Mississippi Law Enforcement Executive Command College Seminar in Oxford, of all places. The fire department permission to advertise and hire certified firefighters to fill two vacancies due to retirement and resignation. And the electric department require, request authorization to advertise to fill two vacant lineman positions and request authorization to advertise for bids for the sale and scrap of wire. Those items are the items that are on consent. Are they? Oh, they are, yes. The mayor's office request approval of the additions to the June 2005 Plains Docket and purchasing and procurement, the request authorize, authorization to accept a bid of $121,591 from Power Connectors of Newman, Georgia for the substation monitoring and control equipment.
Mr. Mayor, that's the one about which I have a question. Mr. Hattaway, I assume that refers to your department, does it not? That particular bid, was that the lowest bid received?
It was the only bid.
The only bid?
Yes.
Okay.
So, one bid received at that amount. Thank you.
Okay, that completes the items on consent. Now, do we have approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I approve approval of the consent agenda and the items that were included.
Okay. Do we have a second? We have a motion to approve it and a second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It brings us down to approval of the minutes from July the 5th. Are there any corrections at this point in the minutes?
There are a number of corrections. If the board is again willing, I would make that motion, which I do not like at all, that the minutes be approved subject to the necessary corrections that I will convey to the city clerk some corrections and additions to the minutes.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Brings us down to board business. The first item on the board business, the discussion of bike lane on University Drive. Matt, I think that's your item.
Well, since the last board meeting, I've reviewed the bike lane proposal with the interim city attorney, Mr. Faber, and of course, the city engineer, Mr. Webb. And while we hope to provide recommendations to the board tonight, we unfortunately thought that we need some additional time. Specifically, we identified a survey error that will materially affect the map that we used to gain consensus from the stakeholders for this bike lane proposal on University Drive. We've also identified some additional national standards that could affect the proposal. So, I propose at this time that we just keep this matter under advisement and will work diligently with Starkville Motion to make sure those concerns are taken care of in that proposal.
So, we'd have no action tonight?
That's my recommendation.
Okay, very good. The next item is a resolution determining not to proceed with the issuance and sale of the general obligation building bonds of the city of Starkville, Mississippi in the principal amount of $5 million without presenting the matter for consideration by the electorate. And I've asked the attorney to read the resolution that is proposed here.
There came on for further consideration by the mayor and board of Alderman the matter of the sale of general obligation building bonds of the city of Starkville, Mississippi. And after discussion of the subject matter, Alderman and whoever the Alderman was that would propose the resolution would be inserted there, offered and moved the adoption of the following resolution. Resolution determining not to proceed with the issuance and sale of the general obligation building bonds of the city of Starkville, Mississippi in the principal amount of $5 million without presenting the matter for consideration by the electorate. Whereas, the mayor and board of Alderman of the city of Starkville, Mississippi in preference sees the board of the municipality acting for and on behalf of the municipality hereby finds and determines and adjudicates as follows. Paragraph number one, pursuant to a resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing and Directing Issuance of a General Obligation Building Bond of the City of Starkville, Mississippi in the principal amount of $5 million to raise money for the purpose of constructing municipal buildings, purchasing building, purchasing land for the construction of buildings and repairing, improving and equipping such buildings, including without limitation a new police station and municipal court facility, describing the form and incidence of said bond and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment thereof and making provision for maintaining the tax-exempt status of the bond adopted February 15, 2005 by the board. Said bonds in preference, the bonds were authorized and directed to be issued. Paragraph number two, a validation proceeding with respect to the bonds is pending in the Chancery Court of Octavahaw County, Mississippi in preference, the validation proceeding. Three, the board has determined not to proceed with the issuance and sale of the bonds without presenting the matter for consideration by the electorate. Now, therefore be it resolved by the board as follows. Section one, the board hereby determines not to proceed with the issuance and sale of the bonds without presenting the matter for consideration by the electorate. The matter of the issuance of the bonds and an election thereon is taken under advisement. Section two, the board hereby approves taking the action necessary to dismiss the validation proceeding and authorizes the city attorney and the mayor to execute such documents and take such actions as are necessary and appropriate for such purposes. Section three, all orders, resolutions or proceedings in conflict with the provision of this resolution shall be and the same are hereby repealed, rescinded and set aside but only to the extent of such conflict. And then there's a place for the Alderman who seconded the resolution to be inserted and there's a place for each of the Alderman to vote.
And we need to really take up this matter right now to vote, is that correct at this point?
Yes, sir. I do believe that so, and I will tell the board that I've been in contact with the bond attorney, Mr. Wall, and he and I prepared this together and he's in full agreement with the language of this resolution.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
We have a motion with a second that we vote on this issue and each individual, all a person would be expected to give their vote. We'll start with Alderman Perkins.
Aye.
Cox.
Aye.
McLauren.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Cory.
Yes.
South.
Yes.
Davis.
Aye.
Thank you. This brings us down to public appearances. The first public appearance we have this night, this evening, is Bob and Sally Whiteside pertaining to a high water bill.
Welcome. Mayor, Count and members of the board, I come to you today as an owner of my Sally property of 710 Old West Point Road where renters Steve and Mrs. Talbot reside. In April, we took a water bill for, that was very excessive, of 140,300 gallons for the month of March. We went through the process of plumber checking the house to see there were leaks, which they found on. We also pulled, had the meter pulled, the city did that and sent it off for evaluation, which improved that it was accurate. We did replace that with a new meter. This, we're here because of this amount is very excessive compared to other months during the year. The normal bill, I'm not sure what the average, would probably be in the neighborhood of 20, 30,000 gallons, looking at the monthly usage. The interesting part about this, and we don't know the answer, and we have communicated with the heads of departments, and they have not the answer either. But to have a bill that, if it were a leak of that amount, because we have no swimming pool there, to start at the end of the last reading and go to the end of that reading, it appears that if there had been that excessive leak, that there would have been some on the previous bill or some on the seating bill. We have processed this matter through departments and we ask your involvement, we ask for your help on this matter. And if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Mr. Mayor, I may ask, our two department heads, Mr. Devlin and Mr. Hattaway, what recommendation, if any, do you have for the board on this matter?
I've only been here a little less than two years, but I'm as it referred to my predecessors who, I guess, through trial and error and a lot of blood, sweat and tears, have developed this current policy, which is exactly as Mr. Whiteside described it. We went through the proper protocol. And at the department head level, which is Ed and also my superintendent, Bob, we have expression in our, at our level to help out with the sewer, which we did at this stage, that was adjusted to a historical average. But the policy has been, for Ed and I, at department head level, is anytime the water or utility goes through a meter and is registered, proven accurate, it's on the books of the city, it's uncompensable at that point. The policy has been that Ed and I have the authority to start forgiving, to compensate with the books. And personally, I think it's a good policy. Of course, you know, it's unfortunate that these kind of things happen, but if you can speak that for a fair time, but I think if you start making concessions, then you're gonna have this kind of thing quite often. But that's, that's just my opinion.
May I ask the dollar amount that was...
Six hundred.
Six hundred, is that just the water or is that water in sewage?
Water in sewage.
In sewage, sewage is approximately 40% of that, is that right, on target?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. So, 300 would be sewage and that would get it down to a $300 bill, is that, is that right?
That's, I think that's, I didn't know the exact percentage.
But it would be somewhere in that neighborhood, is that right? Okay. Ed?
I would have to leave this question. It is, it's over the map. I can't explain where it came from, like where it went to. The only thing that I can be sure of is the act of sale of the water and the readings. We've gone back and it's been very, very, very different. Three different, nobody's looked at the readings in this year. I can't be consistent with the adjustment. And they're all, they were, they were references, what we read at the initial. We've tried to start a city policy, it's been, stayed for quite a few years. That one's just, they don't say to adjust the sewage. I wish I could tell you where the water went, but I can't. But I can't tell you that, in my opinion, that the readings aren't correct and the meter isn't accurate.
And how old is this bill?
This was March.
March, and ever since then, it's been back to normal, is that correct?
Yes, and the law.
And that you did have a plumber in to investigate?
We did.
Do any other board members have anything to say?
Well, I think, while I appreciate the longstanding policy that we've had, I think there has to be a common sense approach to this. As I've done some research, I've found in other communities, in one that I really liked in North Carolina, they had a sometimes bad leaks happen to good people clause for leak adjustments. And in this case, perhaps we have to call it sometimes unexplained charges happen to good people. And I'm very sympathetic and while this is a longstanding policy and perhaps we should give it some significant consideration if we were going to reevaluate it, and so perhaps the best advice may be to take this issue under advisement, but I would recommend a thorough review of this, of this policy to come up with a common sense approach of how we can manage these unexplained situations that have been checked out by certified plumbers and, and we can't find a reason to this.
Mr. Mayor, just one question. Mr. Hattaway, you mentioned two things that are important to me. You said that the reading is correct and the meter is accurate.
Yes.
Which means that the water went through the system.
That's, yes.
Mr. Hattaway, as to the department head or the electric department, in light of those two statements that you just made, that the reading is accurate, is correct and the meter is accurate, do you recommend for us to adjust this bill downward in light of our policies, what we've done in the past? Or do you recommend to this mayor and board that we affirm our policy?
First, I don't have a written report that, that policy. Even though I can't explain where the water went through, I have to believe with all my heart that it went through the meter, therefore, still.
I may ask a question, because I have all these, I have this type of stuff happening all the time. You indicated it was not higher prior to this month of any significance, and it did not come down any significance after this month. I have found in the past from our own experiences that these, these water readings began to gradually, they hit a crescendo and then they began to come down after they had found, and not in a situation where it's just a boop one time happening. So, I think, Mr. Cox, you've got a very valid point here for us to take it under advisement and perhaps look at a policy dealing with these issues.
I would agree completely with all due respect to the two department heads who do a good job for the city. I understand exactly what you're saying and why you're saying it. Sometimes bad things do happen to good people. I would move that we take this matter under advisement for a review of the city's policy. And as far as Reverend Whiteside and the property is concerned, and Mr. Hattaway, that this bill just be set aside until a final determination can be made, but that the Reverend Whiteside or the tenants continue to pay the normal bill each month.
We have a motion with a second. All have heard the motion. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Thank you, Mayor. This opens up our meeting to those that would like to express themselves in three minutes or less. If you'll state your name, of course, it's Mr. Turner.
Good evening, I'm the chairman of the mayor and board of Alderman. The sons of citizens, one have already been, they're with, that was, the citizens connect with the heat, they can understand how light beer, but water and sewer, they cannot understand that, but I know you all have already addressed that concern. We have another concern that's in Ward 7, and that is Wood and Louisville Street. The brick thing that's on the corner is a problem for visibility, and a lot of people feel that there's someone will get hurt, so it's a mess. At that corner, you have to pull almost in the road to make sure that nothing coming from 12 or Greenburg. Another concern is...
Excuse me, can you call that thing, be a little bit more specific, what that brick thing is?
It's a brick wall.
I see, okay.
And the church lands and all, they cannot see once they come up out of, or Wood Street, what's coming from 12 or coming from?
No.
Uh, Greenburg. And they have to get the nose almost out in the street to make sure that they know what's coming from 12, what's coming from, uh, Greenburg. Some retirees that live on outside of the railroad track, they are, have, have know that some of the boats have come loose out of that nose, and they're afraid that that thing falls for its land. And some of the people, they, they would like for the vice mayor to give them a, a mailing address, because sometimes they would like for the vice mayor and mayor to give the concern directly. That's the concerns of citizens.
That's right. Mr. Perkins, make sure you're at address as available.
Yes, sir.
They know where they can find me all the time.
Yes, sir.
Right over in this office.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And we will certainly look into your concern there, the wall, and I didn't quite understand what's fixing to fall off that's on the boats.
Uh, the railroad track that lands beneath here, a lot of boats are coming out of the...
Tracks?
Uh, out of the thing that holds the tracks up.
Uh, Washington Street?
Land right down past the church here.
Okay.
Now, when you go under that line, it's weird.
Okay.
A lot of people are scared to just take a running start to get under it.
Okay.
Good concern to live out there. Any other citizens involved at this time? This brings us up, go ahead, excuse me.
Mayor, Alderman, city clerk, and Mr. Faber.
This is the reverend head, by the way.
Yeah, I'm the head from Second Baptist here in Starkville. Congratulations on your elections slash free elections, and we know that you're going to do, lead the citizens of Starkville, a good job. I come to share with you some concerns that have come forward, understanding that the time is approaching wherein our departmental leaders will, will, will either be reappointed or, or not appointed for, for an additional term. That, that coming up shortly, we wanted to come on behalf of the Octavahaw County Justice Coalition, which is a local civil rights organization that, that we have in place here to share some, some information that we hope will in some way or, or another lend itself to cause you to, to make, make a decision in those appointments that, that would be most beneficial to the citizens of Starkville. We're growing. We've heard that just, just moments ago. The forecast looks bright and sunny for afternoon. Starkville is a good place... Starkville is a good place to live, uh, but we, we, we have some things that, that we can, can, can improve upon. Uh, glad to hear, uh, I think I heard it correctly, concerning the, the justice complex. Uh, very much concerned a, a, about that project, uh, uh, and do pray that we find some alternative means of, of which to house our, um, law enforcement here at municipal level. Uh, bothered with some decisions made and passed, uh, one concerning a, um, the old Walmart build. Here we are now trying to, to find a location that's feasible to put a, a justice complex. And we had a, a bill that donated to the city that was, uh, sold to, uh, an individual who put a club and, and a bowling alley there, uh, and that, that project would be financed by, by the city. Uh, another thing I want to consider is, uh, the property that was sold to the county, and they're now building, uh, courtrooms, two courtrooms, I believe, on that facility. Proud I've spent a four plus billion dollars. I, I would like to, for the board to consider partnering with, uh, some of other, other, other agencies in, in the, in the community particularly, uh, in this case, the county. We definitely, if we need rooms, loans, and such, I'll certainly do that. But I think that four point three billion dollars could be well spent elsewhere if it would be deeply, uh, decreased should we partner, uh, i.e. utilize the courtrooms that are, that are being erected, uh, by, by the county. Also come to share, uh, concerns that we have concerning our, uh, leadership of our city police department. Uh, over the, the, uh, the time that I've been here in Starkville, there have been a number of, of infractions, a number of questionable incidences that, that are viewed, uh, by constituents and I as, uh, as biased and unfair. We, we dare make mention of, of, uh, police chiefs that would find it humorous to dress in a plan outfit, uh, and parade around City Hall. Just, just recently, our attorney general prosecuted Mr. Killam, uh, among plans in, in the Shogun County, and, and this city does not need that type of conduct or individuals with that, with that type of mindset. Uh, very, very bothered, and, and it's embarrassing to, to be known as a, as a resident, took some of the community when those types of things, uh, take place. As you, as you make your considerations for appointments, particularly with the lead law enforcement officer, we have not found any, any nepotism taking place in law enforcement. What we do, we think is, is pertinent to share with you our concerns, uh, with the, uh, small network of the leadership of the, uh, law enforcement out of community. Uh, we have a, a seated police chief, whose wife is an interim police chief at Mississippi State University, uh, who has a son who's connected with our sheriff's department as, as a deputy. Uh, not to say that there anything taking place, but, but definitely lends itself to, to possible con- conflict eventual, particularly when we have other qualified people that, that, uh, could possibly be a better fit for, for our, our department. Recently had a, a situation with bowling alley where young black children were choked. Uh, one young black man, despite four, thirteen, fourteen year old, had a shoulder broken by a police officer. Uh, I understand it three minutes, but thank you.
You have that for a five.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Ken, for bringing that to me, it's been just so...
I'm giving you a little extra time, because I've been cut off myself.
I understand, and, and shortly after that...
So I have sympathy.
Shortly after that, one time it's sure to cut off. I recall you're making a statement, Mayor, concerning your, your views about the, the very thing that I'm sharing now. Uh, simply, uh, I, I have issues with the police chief that would say that a group of young teens got what they deserved when there was more of a managerial problem. Uh, send a rookie officer, have a rookie officer sign a busy second signal on, on Saturday night. Uh, what can you expect when a police officer sends the red signal? Everybody else don't come in, uh, kicking and busting, taking the night. Uh, I think that had we, as a manager of the department, had a more seasoned officer in that business sector, that that incident could have been averted. Uh, in, in addition, uh, I have recently written up a, a, a police officer, Stark Police Officer, Chris Speed, and I sent a memorandum to the, uh, Chief of Police, uh, and, and ended going down Highway twenty-five to Louisville, and I believe to be taking up a transport and, uh, an inmate to the Louisville Correction Facility, driving so fast on that Monday night that a state trooper pulled him over. Uh, and, and, and I again addressed that to the Chief of Police and his office for, for their conduct. But I would interest, I'd perhaps that as well with the managerial, if you've ever heard, get back down there and get back up here and, and, and take over your sector. Uh, concern about, uh, the petition that was submitted where police officers went to, uh, people homes with signed petitions saying that they were against building a justice complex that were addressed by police officers and, and almost encouraged to take their names off of, uh, off of the list. A lot of senior persons, particularly, they could, they have come forward and, and, and really, uh, didn't want to take their name off, but they felt threatened by, by reprisal from, uh, the, the, the police officer, police department. I, I could go on, but I would thank you for, for considering this. And, uh, and before we make those appointments, that we would give consideration. And I'm available at your discretion to go and agree to P T. Uh, got to rush out for a, a, a lead, but I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. PC, you have a good evening, God bless you.
Uh, thank you, Reverend Dr. Head.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, that brings us up to community development. Phil? You probably went to sleep back there.
I thought we were going to Parks and Recreation.
No, that's not only, uh, well, it is, excuse me, excuse me. Uh, you can sit down in that first chair behind you. Go back to sleep, yeah, go back to sleep. How are you this evening?
I'm very good, how are you today? Everyone should receive in the packet a quarterly report for Parks and Recreation. I'll, uh, since you all have been here so long today, I'll skip some of the things that you can, you can look at yourself. But there are some, some pertinent, um, areas that, that we want to make the board aware of, especially the new board, there's areas that we have held off doing some things on until the new board got into place. And now we want to inform you of that and answer any questions before we move forward, particularly with the two percent sales tax. In your packet there, you'll find a, a timeline for the two percent plan. The most pressing issue of that is a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services that we would like to advertise immediately. The, uh, next page on there outlines the priorities for the two percent funding. For those of you who aren't aware, these priorities were based on a study that was conducted citywide, also through campus, and even surveying the use of the city to determine where their priorities were for, uh, Parks and Recreation and recreational facilities. Uh, the number one item that came out of that was a multi-purpose building that would include things like basketball courts, racquetball courts, an indoor track, some office space, some meeting space, and really allow us a large venue where we can host multiple events. Everything from basketball tournaments, volleyball tournaments, gymnastics, dance, an indoor facility for craft fairs, or, or any other area that would be a large location to do. The first step in the process of us moving forward with this is to advertise, to request architects to apply so that we may choose an architect to design our building. I'd include in there pictures of facilities that we have visited, uh, and we have visited facilities from Orange Beach, Alabama, all the way to Tunica, Mississippi. And taken a lot of pictures and gotten a lot of great ideas of how best length the city could be served with this facility. Uh, there's some pictures in there of different facilities, as well as some ideas that you can take a look at. The second to last page has the request for qualifications that we would like to submit for advertising. This was, I got assistance in drafting this from an architect. I think Attorney Faver, that that would meet any, any city requirements as far as legality of that. It gives the city quite a bit of flexibility in, in choosing the architect. But it also gives us an opportunity to, to move forward with two percent and begin that process. From that, we would then draft a, a design and hold a series of public meetings again to get citizen input, same presentation with Board of Alderman as well, on those designs before we move forward to the next step, which would be to secure the revenue source for the funding and, and determine exactly how we're going to break that down. Are there any questions on that?
Board members, where?
I have a question.
Yes.
I noticed that on the agenda you list George Evans Park and Gillespie Center upgrades.
Correct.
But I didn't see that on anything coming, say, from the two percent tax. Is that just going to come in from the regular budget?
The, the previous Board of Alderman authorized us to spend up to forty thousand dollars from the existing two percent tax money toward renovations for that. George Evans Park has, the Gillespie Street Center has just had a new roof replaced on it. Uh, within the next three weeks, there'll be a new play structure in place to replace the existing play equipment that was taken out there. We have advertised for bids and awarded a bid to replace the fence or repair the fence around the basketball facility there, and are in the process of completing the cleanup from over there. All of that's moving, moving forward.
I notice in, um, that the number of organized sports registrations that the county regis- residents represent about thirty-six percent of those activities. Could you talk a little bit about what direct contribution the county makes to, uh, to pay for this?
At this point in time, the county does not contribute any monetary dollars to the Parks and Recreation budget. That's an area that certainly we are looking at, trying to determine the best way to approach that. Talked with the mayor and several members of the board about their input on the best way to approach that. Certainly agree that that's something that at some point we need to, to look at, or how to, how to tell you we're going to go about doing that at this point. But, uh, we are, as a city, offering services to county residents that have looked called. Not sure if that's right or wrong, good or bad, and, uh, sort of the taxpayers of the city are subsidizing recreation for county residents.
Do we have a form of a motion for him to proceed?
Just a quick question for council. Have you had an opportunity to review this document, and are you comfortable with us?
I've just been, uh, I'm not reviewed. Other than just been handed to you. I don't see, you talking about the architectural?
It's, yeah.
I have not, on its base, I don't see a problem with using this as the document to submit bids for architectural work on this project. I've not, uh, put that in relation to city requirements yet, to do comparisons, but on its base, I don't see...
And I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and offer, uh, authorize, um, this request to, uh, to request proposals for architectural and engineering services for a sports flex, multi-purpose building.
Second? Reverend Ross, with a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So last bit of business we have tonight relates to the donated property on the corner of Woodfield Street and Avenue of Patriots. I have talked with Alderman Davis, and we're going to schedule a time for a public meeting specifically for the residents of Greenburg subdivision, but certainly it'll be open to anyone to discuss their input as to what they would like to see at our location. We have some thoughts and ideas of our own that I put in the last page of that packet, but we certainly want to get their full input as to what they want there. From that point, we will go back and get estimates and do budgets and see where our budget falls into place and what kind of timely effort we could, we make in the, in that area. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've been here longer than... Uh, it's been suggested we may take a five-minute break. I see that you already have. Would y'all like to take just a five-minute recess?
Yes, sir.
Very good, well, after a five-minute recess, I will remain in my chair.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octobah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
I need to let the board know that I've, and imagine this right in time to time, I've got a conflict of interest, um, on items number one, and, uh, I guess the, uh, the amended agenda number three. So I'm gonna refuse myself, um, and, uh, but I'll be back for number two.
Okay.
Thank you.
What, what was number?
Oh, it's item number six, uh, uh, consent, which was, uh...
Always part of...
Is that not right?
Yeah, yeah.
It is item number six.
Under community development, peace, court, so...
Under community development that was put onto the, the main agenda. Which is, uh, frankly, already all there, isn't it? Uh, or that's a rezone?
It's a separate.
Okay, that's right.
Well, the first item, this is a discussion of a video submitted by David Brown who beyond a digson lending of all realty to an action taken by the planning zoning commission. It's, or, or lack of action, I think, is the problem where they feel with the rezon one oh six, McKinley, from a C two to a PUD. The planning commission, that there's a meeting, voting to table that request for ninety days. And, uh, they're here to discuss with y'all the lack of action by the planning commission and timeframe, I think, it takes to get, get something passed. I'm gonna let them take over now.
Now, this is strictly a discussion on the, uh, lack of the planning commission to do anything. Is that basically what I understand?
Well, that's, that's what they, they...
Well, they table it, I mean, but, uh, you just indicated they're, they're upset because of the lack of something done. Is that correct?
Well, I'll let them speak on what they're upset on, but... Where'd they go? Right here. Okay. They felt like that they should not have been tabled and some action should have been taken on it. And they want to appeal that action to...
Okay.
Gentlemen?
Uh, we're quite requesting you to, uh, review what, I'm David, and this is my partner, Jeff, you know? We're requesting a review of our original proposal to the planning zoning. Uh, we came forward back in December for the request to rezone the areas to our core zoning. And they told us we need to come back with it and try as a PUD, which is restricted development. So we spent much time and effort on the property, came forward with a PUD, and when we asked them, when we brought it forward with a PUD, they asked us why we brought it forward, that's a PUD. And so at this point in time, we're a little confused as to what direction we need to go with the project. And that's why we're trying to appeal the project to the Board of Alder, from the mayor, so that he can, uh, I don't know if he can possibly pass it as it, as it sits now. But, uh, we're a little confused.
Well, I'm a little confused too, because what I understand is that you're appealing the action of the planning commission to us. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
And if you're appealing the action of the planning commission to us, which means that, uh, they tabled it in which you cannot say, go back to them for ninety days for, uh, reappearance. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
Then if we are looking to, uh, take your, uh, appeal because of they, uh, tabled it for ninety days, then what I understand is that what we're talking about is the appeal for the ninety days. Is that right, right, Mr. Attorney?
That's what it sounds like, if you're saying.
Right, so, and actually, as far as presenting your presentation, ever how gorgeous it may be, the issue that we would need to take up is basically, uh, the appeal, uh, to look at the, uh, tabling for ninety days, the action that they took. for 90 days, the action that they took. And what I understand is you're displeased with the action that they took. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. They did recommend a PUD, and that's what we brought back, and then they asked why we brought it back.
Okay. Did you understand all that, Mr. Attorney?
I understood.
And do you have any...
The only action that they've taken at this time that they can appeal is the 90-day table of their approval.
Okay.
And that's what's only general answer.
Did all of you understand that the only action we can take and look at is the 90-day tabling of their process?
I have a question. Bill, our gentleman, why did the planning commission table it and what was supposed to be done on y'all's end specifically within this 90-day period?
There was general consensus that they didn't like the project the way we presented it, the project we brought to the table.
So are you saying they asked you to redo the project? What are you saying to it?
There was some confusion even by the board as to on what grounds they tabled. There was actual questions all up at the meeting amongst the planning zoning committees on what grounds they tabled, and I'm not sure that it was ever answered.
Bill, can you shed any light on this?
Yes, they were some concerned that it's too dense for the surrounding neighborhood. There's some R2 property, residential property on the east side of this, which face Washington Street, just north of Railroad Bridge, south of... And some of the... I'm wondering if they're pressing concern with the density of that property.
So why did the planning commission table it? What is supposed to occur in this 90-day period?
I understand that it wasn't them doing, they never did say because... But there was confusion on it because somewhere in the mix, we went from having a PUD with the site plan review to just having a rezoning off the PUD. And at that time, they said, "Well, we can't talk about density because, oh, we're up here now doing the rezoning." If they kept saying it was too dense, therefore they're not going, that's not going rezoning because it's too dense, which they couldn't talk about because it wasn't up there for site plan.
If we were under understanding, and we were bringing PUD forward, you had to have your site plan review ready and have it all go through.
Which has been the norm.
That's usually the case, isn't it?
Correct.
And all the surrounding property, the dust touched out property is C2, so another confusion factor was that there's no density factor in C2, so they didn't know what to prepare our density to.
And again, what did they ask be done in this 90-day period? You're gonna come back in 90 days and do what?
But unofficially, since they said, "Since this is a rezoning case, we're not here to discuss the site plan." And one of the facets of the site plan would be the density. So they said, "We're not going to rezon this because it's too dense, we feel, which we can't discuss." Because it wasn't the site plan. So they had separated them into two different plan reviews, one being a PUD rezoning case, one being a site plan. So I felt like they wanted them to go back and make it less dense, come back for a PUD rezoning.
There's nobody from planning zoning here to buy this, right?
Did you go to that meeting right?
No.
I'm only giving the last week's...
This was in June.
June, last meeting. And what is the density factor? How many acres were talking about here?
Right at 3 acres.
Three acres? What have you got?
15 units.
15 units.
God, I'd never make it through this group, would I?
We've got an average of almost 4,500 square feet a lot, and that's right at R4 zoning. That's a pretty large lot, and houses minimal size of thousands of people, which isn't anything, and that's a real neighborhood.
And does it have all-street parking and garages and other issues like that?
It does have garages, but it does have all-street parking, it's got on-site storage for each unit, and it's got roughly the 25% green space and allow more than it had for a while.
And does it have lots of similarities of that small development that is behind? The Greensboro Center perhaps?
Yes, sir, with more green space. And the road actually has a, we provide an ample radius for a fire truck to come in and actually turn around when, in that development over there, it's actually a dead end, and they have to take it on going in one direction.
I want to ask Bill a question. Bill, on that night, was there strong opposition to this PUD from the residents in the area?
There was opposition. I think there was two big people there that build, they don't touch it, but they live on Washington Street, that would be in the town. The block that we're talking about is predominantly C2. There's about three or four houses that face Washington Street that are actually R2 residential some family road. The remainder of that block is a C2. This course is directly behind the old hospital, you know, that area behind. This lot is adjacent to the hospital property, the backside of, and it faces, it has access to McKinley Street as well as...
Right. They're right there by the railroad track?
Yes. I think it's a railroad track represented with that line that is kind of straight, that kind of cuts out, catty corner right there, is that correct?
And there was some confusion on the planning commission as to the density because there's nothing around it but C2.
Got a railroad track. Look over there, got a railroad track. I'd hate to have to live in that house next to a railroad track.
There's residential on Gate Street and some residential on Washington. Both of the property around it is zone in C2. So there's some confusion as to what guideline we put on the density of that section.
If you look at the minutes of the planning zoning commission, it appears that a motion was made to deny the request, the PUD request. That failed, according to this, on a 4-3 vote, and I'm assuming it probably failed with some thinking, "Well, if it's denied, then you are barred a year from coming back with any more rezoning requests." So thus, they voted it down and essentially tabled it for three months, during which time you were supposed to do something, though the minutes don't reflect what that is.
That's exactly what we thought we did when we brought forward the plan, we thought we did it.
The motion didn't reflect it because, as I tried to explain, and I know it's confusing, they weren't, they were trying not to address density because they were dealing strictly with the rezoning.
Right.
But they kept trying, they kept referencing density, and their intention was, without stating, was for these guys to go back, come back with a PUD and test density.
You know...
They did make that motion.
It appears, however, that the group was giving them a chance to do something with the proposal as opposed just to denying it, and that would have been that for a year. And let me sidetrack a moment. Did I hear you say that the density as presently proposed is close to R4?
Yes, sir.
Of course, keep in mind, and this seems to be traveling around, that the purpose of a PUD is not to get a rezoning request to a more dense zone that you couldn't get if you just came out and said you wanted an R4, you know, type of thing. That's not the purpose of a PUD, and I hope we won't start seeing lots of these types of things, and I'm not saying that's what you did, the use of a PUD to get around a rezoning which you feel will be denied, and use of a PUD to achieve that same density, not the use of a PUD.
Well, they originally requested R4, I guess it's the same thing. And the reason that the planning commission advised them to come back with a PUD, because an R4 rezoning would go with the land. And if they got this rezoned to R4, these guys sold it, then we got a picture of R4 that somebody would come in and build as dense as they want. They told this gentleman to come back with a PUD, which, as the mayor knows, is restricted to this, that footprint right there.
Can't do anything else but that footprint.
That's why they told them to come back, so that we'll have a PUD, we'll know exactly what you're gonna build, and you can't build anything else. So when they came back with that, they said, "Well, we're gonna separate, you're not gonna be a site planer, we're just gonna look at this land as a PUD, as a piece of property to be rezoned as a PUD." That's the reason they wouldn't talk about the density, which they kept losing to the whole time.
Well, of course, I assume, you know, what kind of trouble we could get into there, that if they were saying originally that we will not consider this property zone to be zoned, R4 for the density and what would travel with the R4 zone, and then if you presented a PUD which has virtually the same density as an R4 zone, I'm assuming that's what they were reacting adversely to.
I think it was also bound to rental restrictions, you put on something that's a PUD, as well, some square footage of the houses that you put once, was very restricted, and we had not, minimum thousand square foot houses, a lot of actual restrictions wouldn't come in at all.
As an attempt to make this project more desirable to some people's point of view than a straight R4. Was there any reason the planning zoning commission thought they couldn't take action quicker than that, or did someone indicate the need of three months to deal with something?
The first motion was for six months, and then they changed it to three months. So I think they were just giving them an opportunity to go back, to come back with the density.
I just think it's time we stop trying to second-guess what the planning and zoning commission meant and send this back to them and get a specific ruling from them, if they want to table it, if they sent it back because of the, it being a PUD, it was whatever reason. We don't know what that reason, because we're second-guessing, you can't tell from the minute, and we're just going back and forth on what we think he said, she said, and we need to just send it back to them.
If I remember correctly, when the motion was made to table this, Gloria Liddell asked why it was being tabled. Do you happen to remember what the response was to the question?
I remember the response, that I think it was tabled, and there was some discussion about whether we deny it, they can't come back to the project, so we're gonna table it, give them an opportunity to bring it back. What they expected them to do in that three months, I think it was to take the density down, although they didn't put it in a motion for causing, as I said before, legally, they weren't there to discuss the site plan requirements, which were built against it. They were there to discuss the proof, or at least that's what they thought they were there. And we have historically done both at the same time, but how can you have a planned unit developing rezoning if you don't have a plan on the property? But they separated these two and actually the one, the four happened, because there was two of them, two PUDs at the same night, both of them, they split up into a PUD rezoning and then said come back with a site plan. The one prior to, I think, was actually, was a PUD also, they approved the rezoning and told them to come back with a less dense plan. So they kind of changed the method that night. But I think that was their intention, was to give them an opportunity to come back without having to wait.
As opposed just turning it down here.
What's the prayers of the board?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we send this back to the planning and zoning commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say yea. Rest of the show, hands of the town, all those in favor sending it back, please raise your hand. Four. All those opposed, please raise your hand. This one. How did you vote?
I did.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'm afraid that one's gonna be sent back to the planning zoning. If they turn you down, and that, you have the right to appeal to the board again.
This item, Mayor Board, is, at the last meeting, the planning commission heard the request by Medical Development Properties for a site plan review located on, actually on Highway 182, adjacent to the former Starkville Funeral Home. This was, as you recall, was sent back to them before it properly advertised, notified meeting. That was done, it was in the newspaper, one of the first steps in the city. The planning commission heard the request again and recommended approval of this request for a site plan review. We have here from Medical Development Properties, we've been to the question, and I have some drawings here in case of any...
So they made all the specifications for the site plan review, is that correct? Do we have questions, James and Liz?
It appears that my colleagues have been questioning the question. I answered some questions at the prior meeting regarding this matter, the mayor just mentioned that this site plan meets all the ordinances and all of this law. The property questioned zones that is used, did I ask for any rezoning? Did I ask for any special exception? What's the action of the planning and zoning commission?
It was one exchange because he was not at the meeting that we had brought.
Other than that, the vote was approved. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request of the Medical Development Properties for this site plan review located on Stark Road, adjacent to the former Stark Funeral Home.
We have a motion. Do we have a second to the motion? Do we have a second to the motion? Just make sure I'm not sued, okay? This motion fails for lack of a second.
Mayor, is there a problem with the plans that we've submitted?
I don't have problems with plans.
Mr. Hager, could you give us a recommendation based on your understanding of what we'll be deciding here tonight?
I think that, and I've said previously at the last board meeting, I sat in on the zoning, planning and zoning commission meeting, I think that the board, if the board fails to approve the site plan, it could be deemed to be arbitrary and capricious.
Mr. Hager, put that in layperson's terms, for example, for the non-lawyers here, is it arbitrary and capricious, what is it that legal it means?
That means that the board's actions would be unwarranted, in other words, there's no reason for it.
Mr. Hager, what is your opinion on the actions unwarranted?
The court would rule, the judge would rule that the board's actions were not warranted and would send it back for the board to approve the site plan review, or the judge would send it back for approval.
Mr. Hager, in your legal opinion, is there any legal basis to deny this request to approve this site plan?
Not that I've been presented with at this point.
Mr. Hager, are you aware of any other reason that we, as a governmental body, should deny this site plan?
Not based on the site plan review, not based on what Mr. Webb has said in two meetings on the planning and zoning commission.
Mr. Hager, what is your legal opinion to this, Mayor Board, as the interim attorney, as to the action that should be taken on a legal perspective?
The board approved the site plan review, the state...
And are you very confident or comfortable with that legal opinion, Mr. Hager?
Yes.
I believe we need to resolve... I believe we need to resolve this issue tonight, and I'm going to second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? We have one opposition, motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Third item would be, I'll follow up and let those guys get away, final plan approval for East Point subdivision.
Yes.
The planning commission also had the, the meeting, the commission approved the request by the Dix Unlimited for a final plan approval for East Point subdivision on Eleventh Point Road, and with the approval, I believe it was unanimous, but they also made a motion that, again, was unanimous, that no building permits be allowed on this particular lot until such time as the...
Soil erosion.
Methodist work, boy, I think I talked to at least two gentlemen the next day, actually, and they're going to contract with the erosion control company to do that, and if that's squared away, we will, of course, take the recommendations of the planning commission, and not issue any building permits until that's done.
I believe that was your item you wanted to pull.
I just wanted to put it in the record, and that explanation, as far as the erosion, so...
Do we have a motion to approve this?
Yeah, with, with the situation...
Right.
...on the planning and zoning commission, as far as erosion control, making sure that's handled before any building permits are issued by someone.
I thought that was pretty well stated in the suggestion from the planning, but it should be noted as well in the motion, as second motion. We have a motion with a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't know why I'm voting.
Trying to break the clock?
That's right. Uh, Fire Department, and we are asking for a report on the university contract.
The University of Fire Protection Contract Committee met, and Alderman Cox is going to give the report for it.
Thank you. At the last board meeting, a committee was established and tasked with evaluating current fire services contract that we have with Mississippi State University. Our team, which included the mayor, the fire chief, Alderman Corey, Davis, and me, have met, and we've reviewed that contract, as well as any new obligations and other priorities. We find that we're ready to enter into formal negotiations with the university, and therefore I make the motion to direct city staff to take the appropriate steps as allowed by our contract to renegotiate the fire services contract with MSU.
We have a motion, do we have a second to Alderman Cox's motion? Second. We got a motion with a second, Mills second then. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? It passes, thank you very much. Let's bring us down to the public works. This is your bid, I believe.
Yeah, just one quick item. On the Babylon and Fire Station Road rebuilding project, we decided that soil cementing base is a remediation we want to pursue, and we had previously had a unit, approved unit price list from APAC that had disapproved out as a subcontracting arrangement, concrete stone construction. When I called up schedule of work last Thursday, they called me back late Friday afternoon and said they could no longer honor that subcontracting arrangement because of price increases in time and other, other factors, so that puts it back in the arena, we have to advertise the steel dills.
So did it really knock the price out of the roof, or is it a compromise?
It was a seven and a half percent.
Well, that's not too bad.
So with that said, I seek your approval to advertise the steel dills for this work, so that we can pursue our plans to rebuild Fire Station Babylon Road. May I have an approval?
We have a motion with a, and a second, all those in favor of the motion say aye, please. All those opposed? No opposition, it passes, thank you very much. To bring us down to the electric department, item number three, that was on consent.
I, I, I just had a couple of questions before you go. How much, this trencher is for underground, laying underground till, how much of that are we doing and, and forward from the city as opposed to developers doing themselves?
We're really borrowing more, especially in systems, trying to light installation with, with trenching, the wood lines, bigger lines going back to the loose and pavements, we added to, a lot of our rail lights, like in Avalon apartment complex, we rent the lights, the poles and the lights, we have to do trenching for that, those are getting in our own complex. Over on Highway twelve extended to Newport, we had to rent a trencher to try to put in a primary line to feed the lights there, the Fat Station Road intersection, those are, and that's, that's just part of what we end up having to do, and most of the time we had to, to rent from one of the rail companies here in Daley, due to the breakdown or the use of the city's trencher, and it was purchased in the late seventies, so, so this, this trencher was budgeted, and, yes, budgeted, I guess, today.
I just wanted to make sure that we were doing enough of it to justify buying this equipment to make this an upkeep as opposed to contracting that work out.
Yes, yes, I assure you, we are.
I would move authorization to advertise the steel dills sold and purchased.
We have to second.
We have a motion with a second, that all of you here, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those that have a nay, it passes. Thank you. Let's bring us down to the mayor's office, and we made a motion earlier to discuss reappointment of department heads, that was passed by four to three. We're now at that point of discussing reappointments of department heads and reorganization of department heads. Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would like to move the reappointment of Ms. Marquita Outlaw as municipal clerk.
Uh, there's been a motion to appoint Mrs. Outlaw as the clerk, with a motion and a second, all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Might there be an opportunity for discussion?
Uh, if you'd like, yes.
I'm just going to repeat my objection that I raised earlier this evening, we advertised that we would discuss the reappointment of department heads for another meeting in July, that was in the official agenda, and it was published in the newspaper. By going ahead and voting this evening, we are denying public input and participation, both pro and con, and I have received more calls on this issue than any other issue in my short tenure, both representing both pro and con, and I just want to make sure that that's well stated for the record, that we have denied participation in this issue, and I would be silent on my objection again, thank you.
With all due respect to Alderman Cox, talking about the agenda being printed in the local newspaper, I believe the last line of the Struggle Daily article this morning said, "Agenda subject to amendment." So it says it right there in the article, that there are possible changes that could be made, not to mention the fact that at our July fifth meeting, we left with the understanding and agreement that we would make appointments on July the nineteenth, and I don't really know where we, as a board, made a decision to hold another special meeting in July to make those appointments. Further, I will be out of town the rest of the month on working days, therefore you're denying me, as an elected official, the right to vote on these issues. So I think we need to move ahead, make these appointments, as we said we would do on July fifth, and, and proceed as we've already voted this evening.
I would concur with Alderman Davis, at the last board meeting, at the request of my colleagues around the board, there was the request that we put off a former department head until this recess meeting. We left the meeting with that understanding, how it appeared on the agenda, who made the decision, who did all this stuff, I do not know, the board did not make it as it should have, so I concur in this particular point that Alderman Davis makes. Plus, I too will be out most all working days until the end of the month, we have a lot of activities going on, he and I will be out at the same time at different meetings.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, regardless of whether it was a mistake in the official agenda that was published, that was provided to the public, and that was repeated in the newspapers, it states that we will be requesting authorization to discuss this at a different meeting in July, and while I do appreciate that there apparently are some travel schedules, and I would certainly hope that we can all participate in the agenda process as we go forward, this is what was communicated, and to my concerns, exactly what I've already stated, and, and all I ask is that be put in the record, and I'm comfortable moving forward?
Do you have what he stated in the record, please?
And you have Alderman Davis, and it might state also, put this in the record.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a motion with a second to reappoint Mrs. Outlaw to her current position. Can we have a show of hands, all those in favor, please?
Mr. Mayor and Board, I move the appointment of Police Chief David Lindley as police chief.
We have a motion, a second, that David Lindley be appointed the police, the chief of police.
Mr. Mayor, I make my same objection, that we put in our official agenda that we would discuss reappointment of department heads at another meeting in July, it was published in the newspaper, it was put out by this office as the official agenda, we are denying public input and participation, both pro and con, and I want my objection reported in the news.
Do you have his objection put in the board?
And I renew the same response to his objection, the board left at the regular meeting of this month with the understanding that department heads would be appointed at this meeting, how an incorrect agenda was reported to the newspaper, I still am at a loss to understand. I call for a question.
I would like to strongly oppose the continuing this reappointment of department heads, due to the fact that I feel like there's been some manipulations of this, why it's come up the way it has, and I strongly disagree with continue. I want that to go on the record.
Could you please take that note that Alderman Mills is the predecessor? And I believe the call for the vote, with those in favor of reappointing the police chief, David Lindley, please raise your hand. Show of hands, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I move the reappointment of Fire Chief William Grantum to the position of fire chief.
We have a motion, a second, that we reappoint Fire Chief, any discussion?
Recently stated objections.
Then would you also add Mr. Mills' objections?
And my response?
And we just concede that's going to be an item of all of these appointments.
I think it probably is going to be that way.
Yes, and I'd like to say, I want the newspaper that's here tonight to make sure this gets in the paper. Thank you.
Uh, all those in favor of the reappointment of the chief, please raise your hand, please. Looks unanimous, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I move the appointment of Bill Webb as city engineer, with the stipulation that duties may be added or removed from his current workload, should conditions warrant, and this may occur with further actions tonight, but I'm moving his reappointment as city engineer, with duties to be discussed, assignments to be specifically discussed when we discuss reorganization.
Get all that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Thank you.
We have a motion with a second, that we reappoint Mr. Webb, currently with possible changes coming within the coming weeks. All those in favor, please show by, your hands raised, please, so we get accurate. It's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I move the reappointment of Doug Devlin as Public Services Director for the city, specific duties and assignments to also depend upon a subsequent discussion of reorganization.
I see. Any questions, discussion? Second. Did you second?
Well, I will second, even though I'm objecting full process. You will second?
Uh, we have a motion that was worded the same way with Mr. Webb was, we have a motion with a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous?
Oh, who am I missing?
Judge.
Oh, no, I was skipping him.
City judge.
Uh, I move the appointment of Mr. Ed Haddaway as the general manager of the electric department.
We have a motion with a second, Mr. Haddaway be reappointed as head of the electric department. Any discussion, the same objection, I think, with the... All those in favor, please raise your hand. It looks like it's unanimous again.
Mr. Mayor and Board, I move the appointment of William D. Ishi as municipal judge.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have the same objections as well for this. All those in favor of Judge Ishi being reappointed, please raise your hand. Looks like it's a hundred percent again.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, I move the reappointment of Rodney Favor as interim municipal prosecutor until such time as the municipal prosecutor returns from the ward.
We have a motion, a second, with the same objections. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Looks like another hundred percent.
Oh, am I missing anyone? No. Uh, I move that all these individuals just reappointed come with a recommendation to the board at the next meeting relative to appointment of employees in their respective units, departments, offices, whatever.
We have a motion, and do we have a second to that motion? We have a motion with a second, with the same objections. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's a hundred percent again.
I don't think I have an objection. Advertising for them to come in two weeks, so I have no objection to that, my previous objection was as related to appointing departments.
Oh, have I missed anyone, let's be sure.
Okay, let's bring us down to personnel.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I want to make some comments on reorganization. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of matters I want to present to the board on reorganization, and I feel that this is a very pertinent meeting to do this, these are reorganizations that are very pivotal to our governmental operations, these reorganizations are pertaining particularly to our, number one is to our sanitation department. Right now, Mr. Devlin is overwhelmed with eight different divisions, street, sanitation, water sewer, landscape, wastewater, new construction rehab, landfill, drinking water compliance, and of course, he's been very energetic in trying to make all those things happen, and there's no reflection on Mr. Devlin. First thing I want to mention tonight is that we have our sanitation division, our public service department, that is a very pivotal division within our city, the sanitation division... The sanitation division is being efficiently operated, run by our sanitation superintendent, Ms. Sharon Boyd. The sanitation division has a lot of interaction with the public on a daily basis. It has a constant, regular action with the public on a daily basis in that it picks up the garbage at each household at least twice a week. And that is a very important department. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer a motion tonight, this is the first of two, that we reorganize the public services department by allowing the sanitation division to be considered, treated and recognized as a separate city department to be referred to at all times as the sanitation department. That the division director, Ms. Sharon Boyd, shall be considered, treated and recognized as a department head. That Ms. Sharon Boyd shall be immediately supervised by the chief administrative officer who is expected to be hired tonight and that she will ultimately report to the mayor and board of Alderman. That the city's organizational charge and structure should be reflected to reflect this organizational change. That Ms. Sharon Boyd's salary, annually that is, of $34,008,813, be increased to a grade 12, step six eight to $36,541, which is less than $1,700 a year. And that this reorganization shall take full force and effect beginning of the workday on tomorrow, July 20, 2005, and that Ms. Boyd shall be on the normal standard six-month probationary period. This is on the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not about to repeat everything Roy said. Do we have a second to his motion?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of comments here. I have no objection whatsoever to what Alderman Perkins proposes. However, there are some things I think that make this, at this point in time, bad public policy. The city avoids scrupulously trying to spot rezone things within the city. This is in effect a spot reorganization. We're talking about hiring a new chief administrative officer. We're talking about subsequent reorganization, yet out of the clear blue for no necessary reason at this point. We're talking about a spot reorganization. I would think that such a reorganization, and I have no objection to what is proposed, that such a reorganization should be properly considered at the time when the chief administrative officer and the board takes a look at the entire structure and operation of the city. Spot reorganization is just as bad as spot rezone.
Okay, everybody heard Mr. McLauren's comments? Any other discussion?
Mr. Devlin, I have a question. Do you have any statements involving this proposal?
Sharon does a good job. This is what the board wants to do. I support and continue to support Sharon in her advocacy.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't see anything any different here than in the motion with Mr. Webb as city The comment was made, da-da-da, whatever, that some changes would be made with him. So that's part of reorganization. I don't see where there's any difference.
Any other discussion?
I think that Alderman Perkins raised some very valid points in the course of this motion. When he discussed the amount of contact this particular department has with the public, the fact that they are at just, you know, every home, resident at least twice a week, excluding holidays. I think that we are talking about hiring a CAO this evening, which is adding in effect a layer of bureaucracy to city government. And rather than push what I consider one of the most frequently, well, a department that has some of the most frequent contact with our constituents and our public further down into bureaucracy, you're pulling it out and putting it with the same level and reporting status to us as the board. It helps with accountability as far as if you have a problem. And I know that if someone doesn't get their garbage picked up, the first person they're calling is either the mayor or the Alderman. And rather than have this department buried down under board bureaucracy, it is a good idea to pull it out from under and be able to identify accountability. There's no places to fumble the ball, if you will, and I think that this is a good move even at this time in light of Mr. McLauren's comments.
And again, Mr. Mayor, I said I have no objection to the intent of the thing. I do have objection to spot reorganization when this could wait an evaluation by the chief administrative officer as well as evaluation by the new board members who have not had a chance to look at existing organization, how well and how much trouble there is in its particular operation.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
As a matter of fact, there is a bit of further discussion. This item was not put on the agenda. There was no public notice. And while it may be the will of this board that that's not important, it's important to me. And this is a significant reorganization. I am, much like with the department heads, not commenting on the specific merits of it, but I think as a principle that we should inform the public of our activities here, both in the official agenda, as well as putting together a more complete presentation so that everyone can understand the impact of this decision. And I'm uncomfortable with us doing this and I'd like to make a motion that we table this until our next meeting.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second? We have a motion to table it. We will take a vote on the motion to table. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand to table. We have three. All those opposed to the motion to table? We have four against. We're back to the original motion now. We have discussed it, and I know we've discussed it long enough. All those in favor of the reorganization of the sanitary department head, please raise your hand. We have five. Those opposed, please raise your hand. We have two. Wins by five to two. That brings us down a -- yes.
Just one, this is my final thing. Good. Mr. Mayor, again, I want to make Mr. Devlin vote to find out who is doing it. And again, I want echo some preliminary comments. I would like to see our city engineer, of course, we've been in the process of hiring a planner tonight, but I would like to see our city engineer, Mr. Webb, assume responsibility over the street department, of course, no reflection of Mr. Devlin, but Mr. Webb has done this for many years, city engineer, that certainly would coincide well with his technical experience and background. And with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I move that the street division of the public services department be under the complete, total and absolute control supervision authority and management of our city engineer and that the street superintendent for our city, Mr. Larry Light, shall report directly to Mr. Webb and that Mr. Webb shall be in control over all the street department matters, functions and equipment and all matters linked to the street department.
Do we have a second to that motion tonight? We have a motion with a second. Do we have discussion?
I renew my same objection. I have no objection to Mr. Webb assuming control of the street department. Again, these little pet spot reorganizations are being done without consideration of the organization and operation of the city as a whole, without any input from the new chief administrative officer and without the new board members being given a chance to see how the existing structure of the city functions or does not function.
Any other comments?
I renew my objection on both principle and process. I request that in form of the motion that we table this issue so that we can properly consider it at our next meeting.
Do we have a second to the motion to table this?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor of the motion to table, please raise your hands. You've got three votes. All those opposed, raise your hands. We have a, you're denied. All those in original, they favor the original motion? All those in favor of the original motion, raise your hands. We have four votes for the original motion. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Three. Okay, that passes. That brings us down to personnel. Would we have any other rearranging of the tech order?
Mr. Mayor and Board, I would move that the board move into executive session for discussion of this proposed or potential litigation regarding mosquito control and a discussion of the attributes, good, bad and different, of the candidates for the various positions for chief administrative officer, city planner, interim city planner, municipal attorney and administrative assistant to the mayor that were, for which interviews were conducted tonight.
Second. We have a motion, a second, that we move into executive session to discuss these items, these people. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If y'all would pardon us.